Do you, excuse me, do you have that proclamation that they can?
Yes, we do. Is there somebody here to accept it?
There is. Actually, the President of the Association happens to be here.
Please come forward. Mr. Murphy, if you care to join us?
And Rachel Hendricks, CEO of the Association.
Yeah, good question. I'm going to commission. Excuse me. Here's a second copy.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kadesh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wetzel. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Floor is open for public comment. If you have any comments you wish to make to the council, please step to the podium and state your name, the area of town that you reside, and if you would speak.
John Harrigan. I live in Vernon. I'm also the founder of the Veteran Cemetery here, and it's going to be in Sparta. There was some misinformation that was given out. I heard from the last meeting that the cemetery is only for Vietnam veterans. That's wrong. It's open to all veterans, no matter when they served, as long as they have an honorable discharge. We'll be ready to open probably the end of May, if the weather ever works. But that's what's holding us back right now. But it's there, and if there's anybody has any questions, you can call me and let me know instead of giving out stuff that, you know, that's not right. There's more people being formed.
John, it's my understanding, we got that information from the SAR, in which an individual got up and spoke about it. It's my information that, Sons of American Revolution.
Oh.
It's my information from him that you cannot open it until you have a million dollars in operational funds.
I'd like a million dollars, yeah, but I can't open it right now.
Because it's not supported by government, it has to be done by private donations. And my concern was that we get started, some method by which those donations can be collected.
Well, we've been receiving donations for the past eight years, and at the point now, we're at the point now where we can start to bury people, hopefully, like I said, with the weather, by the end of May.
Well, as I say-
But if you know anybody's got a million dollars, call me.[233.73][233.73](laughter).
What I, I'll repeat. I think you're only up to $200,000 at this point, and it can't be used until a million dollars of maintenance funds is collected, so it'll be sustained.
No, that's false. That's wrong.
Well, one of your, one of your members gave out that information, so-
Well, we're not with the Sons of the Revolution, so I don't know where they got that from.
No, no. He's a Vietnam vet who's involved with it down in Sparta.
Well, I don't know where he got that from, but everything's been okay by the Cemetery Board. They vokate us with the preservation and maintenance fund.
I believe he's on the Cemetery Board.
Well, I really don't know where we got the information from, but we've got our cemetery number. We're all set to go.
All right. Well, I'll go back and get ahold of him.
I believe you also have counsel that-
Oh, yes, yes. Kevin Kelly's been taking care of everything, but we're just waiting now for, like I said, the weather to break. Once we get it leveled out, we're all set. Everything we've gotten now so far has been donated to us. And the only problem is we have to charge for it, and we have to put the money in the Maintenance and Preservation Fund, which is 15 percent of each sale.
That's what I'm talking about.
Well, we've got the money. All you need is $75,000 to start.
Well, he said a million. He said a million in order to have an income coming in all the time.
No. I don't know where he got that from, but it's wrong.
No, I don't want to get involved in this dispute. It doesn't-
All right, all right. But I'm just telling you, this is, this is, the Cemetery Board gave us our letter. We're okay to go. We've got the money in the Preservation and Maintenance Fund. We're all set. I just wanted to straighten that out in case anybody asked.
Fine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John, question.
Yes.
Can the spouses be buried there also?
Yeah, what I did is I just went by the rules and regulations of the federal and national and state-run cemeteries, because if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So I just took their rules and regulations, and the State Board accepted it, and everything went through that way.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there additional comments?
Harry Martin, St. Vernon. Whenever. John, and all those involved, thank you very much. Could we maybe get a round of applause for that?[385.81][385.81](applause).
Flashing sign.
I've mentioned this before to this council, and I believe other councils, and I'm thinking that it's better to err on the side of transparency. So it would be nice to see, in my opinion, ordinances that are even going to be introduced this night, the draft of them posted, so we can review them. That way, in case there's something really off the wall or whatever that you may not see, but someone else might see, we also have the opportunity to mention it to you ahead, especially in tonight's situation, where it appears we have an ordinance for introduction that's going to amend a chapter of our code, and then later on, we have an ordinance that's going to replace that chapter. Now, that sequence is kind of out of whack to begin with. Now, even if you're new, which technically you shouldn't know, that is going to fail, the ordinance later on, I would think it would be difficult to have an ordinance to amend a section that you're replacing. So food for thought. The other part of that is, some of the people I see here tonight, and there were quite a few others, and myself, were here for the work session, and we were told there would be more discussion, and if anyone was interested in the committee, to let the clerk know. And it's been four weeks now, and haven't heard anything, don't know anything, and then to see another ordinance added, and the old one back on, it just looks strange, to say the least. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any additional comments?
Good evening. My name is Chris DeGarry. I live in Vernon. At our last town council meeting, Councilman Dick Wetzel said that Dan Kadesh has a personal vendetta against the Vernon Historical Society. This is because Dan thought we shouldn't be giving them $3,000 out of our budget. This has never been done before. Dan Kadesh and his wife Carol have been members of the Historical Society for many years, and as such, are very interested that it will continue to thrive, so I hardly think that this is the case. This was Councilman Dan Kadesh's opinion, and he never should have been criticized by another council member for giving his view. We are all granted our God-given rights of free speech through our Constitution, and no one has the right to attempt to take this freedom from us just because they may not be in agreement with what we have to say. I believe that those members on the council that speak up, and whose thoughts differ from the other three members, are being discriminated against. We should speak the truth to one another, not plot evil against one another. Some people will twist the truth and bend it a little, and believe that any means is justified as long as it gets one to the goal that one wants. Scripture tells us that out of the abundance of the heart, the mouth speaks. Compassion and concern for others, and common courtesy show the true state of one's someone's heart. Something we all need to remember before we write our editorials and before we speak is that God detests lying lips, but he delights in people who are trustworthy. We in America are so fortunate that we have the right to free speech. Because of this right, people may at times become offended or insulted. This is the price we pay for living in a democracy such as ours. That free speech must be protected if we want to continue to live in an unrestricted society. As such, we can argue against each other's positions and get extremely upset with one another. Unfortunately, there are those who want to take that free speech away, free exchange of ideas, and take everything that is said personally by calling anyone who disagrees with them their adversaries. We must all defend our rights in order that individual liberty and free speech may perpetuate. And thank you very much.[634.04][634.04](applause).
Seeing no one else coming forward, I'll ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Murphy. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kadesh. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Zuckerman, may we have the mayor's report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our CFO, Elka, will be handing out our municipal user-friendly budget, which is a new form required by the state of New Jersey. It will be on our website tomorrow for public viewing. It is a new form, which the state is looking to bring together some more financial information. It is user-unfriendly, in many people's opinion, including mine, but it's one of those that we're stuck with from the state, and we've completed our requirement. It'll be mailed tomorrow to the state. That's my report.
Thank you.
Bill, will this change our normal budget that we have from year?
No.
So it's just an addition to?
It's an addition to. It was delayed by the state. It was supposed to be handed out in final form for the introduction. It didn't make that. It was supposed to be in order, in place, by the adoption date. The state did not have it, and they just rolled it out about a week ago or so. But it's an addition to, not a replacement of.
And some of the items are repetitive from the budget to summarize the different parts.
All members have copies of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 9th, the executive session of March 23rd, and the regular meeting minutes of March 23rd as well. May I have a motion to cast all three of these as one motion? If there is any question, we can make, or a correction or deletion, we can discuss that.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kadesh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Murphy. Are there any comments on the minutes? I have one. It's a small one. It's just an omission. On regular meeting minutes of March 9th, Dollar Store should be followed by Dollar I'm sorry, should be, General Store should be preceded by Dollar. I apologize. With that correction, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kadesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Lynch? Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Rizzuto?
Moving to our consent agenda. Resolution 1584, supporting the Transparent Tax Act of 2015. This resolution is in support of Assembly Bill 4235, which will require that when a person successfully appeals their taxes, that the school board and county will have to pay their share in the refund rather than shift 100 percent of the burden on to the Resolution 15-85, resolution authorizing the application to the United States Department of Justice Office of the Justice Programs. This resolution authorizes application to the federal government's Department of Justice for reimbursement of 50 percent of the cost of bulletproof vest slash body armor. Resolution 15-86, authorizing the award contract to place the vinyl flooring in the Vernon Township Senior Citizen Center. This resolution authorizes an award to, contract to award flooring their quoted price of $5,020. Resolution 15-87, authorizing placement of signs in various locations for Vernon Cub Scouts Recruiting Night. This resolution authorizes the Cub Scouts to post signs around the township at various locations in accordance with Township Code 330-180. The purpose of the signs is for recruiting new members. May I have a motion to place resolutions 1584 through 1587 on the floor for consideration and adoption?
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Kadesh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wetzel. Are there any questions or comments on this?
No. Do we have a Cub Scout in the audience?
We do.
Is he? I just thought I'd recognize if he was. Oh, I thought I just said if we have one. Just thought, you know, if you recognized that he's-
I don't know if he's here for that reason, but if he is-
That's why I was just asking.
No, he's not here for that reason. He's trying to burn one of his badges.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. One thing I would like to point out, on the Transparent Act, Tax Act of 2015, while on the face, it seems like it might be a great idea, and it probably would, if you read what may be permitted, at present, the township sends one tax bill, which enumerates the municipal tax, county library tax, the county tax, and the school tax. It's separated on each tax bill. Mrs. Yetter, I believe you have copies I asked you to bring, if you'd like to pass them out to the council members for, just as an example. With passage of this bill, there would be the permission, or the possibility, of the township having to print a second bill, meaning the township municipal tax would be printed separately, and the school and county tax would be printed separately. With that separation, there becomes the possibility that a resident might come in and say, "I choose to pay this tax, but not these two," or "these two, and not this one." Hence, there becomes the possibility that somebody could go into tax sale because of the fact that they thought they paid all three, but only paid it two, paid on two. So I think this is something that needs to be considered, perhaps in the final adoption of this bill. Honestly, I don't think, in my opinion, in looking at the comments that have been made online, that this bill has enough support to have any legs. I don't know, perhaps our attorney can give us some thoughts on this.
I think it's highly unlikely to pass.
So while we could support it on that basis, I would hope that, given those two conditions, that we might have an opportunity to have that addressed at a later date, once, should it come, should it come to pass. So I just thought I'd bring this to the council's attention. Are there any other comments? If not, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Kadesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Rizzuto?
Yes.
Motion carries through. 15-87 through 87.
Thank you. Introduction of first reading on some proposed ordinances. This is ordinance 15-11, ordinance extending lease agreement between the Vernon Township Board of Education and the Township of Vernon, and a sublease agreement between the Township of Vernon and the Dogs Owners Gathering Society of Vernon Township Incorporated. For certain unimproved real property identified on official tax maps of the Vernon Township of Vernon, as Block 133, Lot 2.05, the township has had a lease agreement with the Board of Education for the property mentioned, and that this is used as a dog park. This resolution authorizes the continuation of those leases. May I have a motion to introduce 15-10 with a public hearing to be held on May 11th?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kadesh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wetzel. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kadesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Rizzuto?
Yes.
Motion carries to introduce the public hearing on May 11th.
Thank you. An ordinance amending Chapter 447 of the Code of the Township of Vernon entitled Property Maintenance. 1512 is a ordinance that creates the obligation for out-of-state creditors to register and an in-state representative or agent with the municipal clerk. It is also authorizes a fine in the event if the property is not maintained. The in-state representative or agent is someone who is registered, who is the registered agent appointed by the bank in accordance with NJSA 40:10B-51A1. It does not mean the real estate agent. May I have a motion to introduce 1510 with a public hearing to be held on May 11, 2015?
1512.
Yeah. I'm sorry, 15-
I'm not sure what you're talking about. Aren't we talking about 1507?
1512.
1512. Sorry.
Oh, you're doing 1512 first?
Yeah.
Motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Murphy?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kadesh. May we have a roll call, please?
No.
I'm sorry, this is first reading. This is an introduction, isn't it?
Yeah. Do you, do you just want me to comment just for a moment about the interaction between 1512 and 1507?
Please.
So it's my understanding from the public comments at the work session, that the council was not of the mindset, based upon those comments, to go forward with a complete restating of the ordinance for Chapter 447. So the provisions that you're adopting tonight are new provisions authorized by a statute that was passed last fall that solves the problem of the code enforcement officers and the municipal court. They frequently want to issue property maintenance and other code violations against properties in foreclosure, but because there's no in-state representative, they have a problem with the process. So 1512 is limited to changing your property maintenance ordinance with respect to requiring foreclosing entities to appoint in-state residents to allow legal process to go forward. The reason that we put both on the agenda tonight is that there is no contradiction between the two ordinances. In fact, the provisions you're adopting in 1512 are word for word the provisions in 1507. So if the council were to adopt 1507, there's no conflict. My understanding is that the council was unlike, based upon the comments I heard, unlikely to adopt 1507, but rather to vote it down and allow more time for a committee and for additional work on that ordinance. But I just wanted to explain at this point in the meeting that there really is no conflict between 1512 and 1507, despite the fact that they both address the same chapter.
But just for clarification, 1512 is only a partial piece of 1507.
A small part, correct.
And that part is word for word.
Correct.
And we're just enhancing what we already have.
You're just enhancing what you already have to allow process to be conducted against out-of-state entities?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kadesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Rizzuto?
Yes.
Motion carries to introduce the ordinance 1512 with a public hearing on May 11th.
Thank you. Ordinance 1513, an ordinance of the Township of Vernon in the County of Sussex, New Jersey, authorizing the purchase of various equipment and repairs in, by, and for the township pursuant to NJSA 40:56-1, and an appropriation, therefore, the sum of $80,000, and providing that such sum, so appropriated, shall be raised from the capital fund balance of the account of the township. This authorizes the expenditure from the capital budget for the purchase of a lawnmower, pickup truck, and replace outdated computers. This ordinance does not create new debt, but simply allocates funds already in the capital budget. May I have a motion to introduce ordinance 1510 with a public hearing to be held on May 11, 2015?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kadesh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wetzel. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kadesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Rizzuto?
Yes.
Motion carries to introduce 1513 with a public hearing on May 11th.
Moving to second readings, for ordinance 1507, an ordinance replacing Chapter 447 of the Code of the Township of Vernon entitled Property Maintenance. This ordinance establishes a standard for the maintaining real property in the township, including grass, debris, and sanitation. Additionally, it provides an enforcement mechanism when the property is in foreclosure. May I have a motion to either table or defeat this particular ordinance?
I would like to call the question.
Motion is, the issue has been called. May we have a roll call, please?
Well, that's the second.
I'm sorry, you called the question.
I'd like to vote on it.
Yes, that's what I said, roll call.
But you need a second?
I'm sorry, second?
I apologize, I'm confused. Are you opening the public hearing, or are you table?
No.
No.
I'm just calling it.
We advertised for a public hearing.
If you're, if the motion is to reject ordinance 1507 and table the issue indefinitely, then the council could decide whether or not to conduct the public hearing. You can't adopt it without a public hearing.
No, I need clarification. Oh, did I make a motion to reject, or to call the question?
You made a motion to call the question.
I want to know what, I want to be clear what we're voting for.
Right. Your motion to call the question is to get, is to end debate and get to a vote.
Right.
So it's going to be a two-part.
I'll go along with that.
So we are voting, the motion is to either table or to reject?
No, Mr., so let's-
He's, and he's calling the question.
Right.
But we are calling the question, and the vote will be on-
It's just calling the question to end the debate and bring it to a vote.
Right.
There's no thumbs up or thumbs down in that motion.
Right. Okay.
Yep, that's a motion on the table. It's not been seconded, so someone could second that motion, or someone could make a motion and second to reject.
All right, I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw my call, and I will make a motion to reject.
And I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Kadesh to defeat the motion. Is there, seconded by Mr. Wetzel? Roll call, please.
And just, I'm sorry, because we don't always do motions to reject. If you vote yes, this ordinance is rejected and will come up again when the council brings it up again.
Right.
Councilmember Kadesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Rizzuto?
Yes. Ordinance 1508, an ordinance amending various sections of the Code of the Township of Vernon to correct references to the township manager. This ordinance correct- This ordinance corrects various sections of the township code. As a result of the change of government, it does not vest or remove the authority of any individual, but merely corrects the verbiage in the township code to match the form of government. For example, in Chapter 94, the Police Code was amended in part previously. This amends the other sections and reinforces the previous changes. Further, the township does not have a township manager, nor is it defined in our current township code. The position of township manager was removed at the time the township changed its form of government in 2011. May I have a motion to open the meeting for public hearing on ordinance 1508?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Wetzel. Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Murphy. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is open to the public for, to address 1508. Any comments? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public on ordinance 1508.
Motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Murphy?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wetzel. All in favor, please signify...
I'd like to have a little bit of a discussion.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What are you saying, in favor?
Closing.
Closing.
Closing the floor to the public.
Aye.
Okay, and may, any questions or comments before we call the roll from the...
Yeah, I still believe that we should be having a small work session to go through each and every one of these. I know that the clerk and the attorney have done so, but I'd like to point out that it does make some changes. And one of them is 30-3, which is the first one. 30-3 says, "A bill or a claim duly certified shall be presented to the mayor and the township council for approval of payment at its regular meeting. All claims or bills to be considered by the governing body shall be made available to every member of the said governing body before each meeting." Well, obviously, that is not the procedure that we've done in the past. We approve the list after everything else has been paid. The new one is, "The bill of claim duly certified shall be presented to the mayor for approval of payment." So, it knocks out the bill list even as a review by the council, and I think that's wrong. I think it's completely wrong, and even if it's a ceremonial oversight, I believe it should stay there. And there are other things. For instance, the physical examinations are being supervised by the mayor, and I just think it's absolutely silly.
No, he's not supervised. I believe he's just, the physician that acts on behalf of the township is selected by the mayor.
Well, I think the business administrator is certainly capable of doing that. And there are other things that I, the annual physical examination, there are other things that I think should be in the hands of someone other than the mayor, just to give an arms-length relationship to it. That's all.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Kadesh?
No.
I apologize, we just have a motion to adopt.
May I have a motion to adopt?
Okay.
I apologize.
I'll second, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Wetzel. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Murphy.
Council...
May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kadesh?
No.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes, and if we listen to what Dan has to say, vendors will not get paid in 30 days or whatever.
That's not true. That is simply not true.
Well, excuse me, I may want to amend my vote, because I'm, what I'm gathering now is maybe the full council's not understanding what this ordinance is.
I understand completely what it is.
Well...
This only changes the verbiage.
I understand it's changing the verbiage, but I'm just, you know, if you're questioning now, saying that the vendors wouldn't get paid.
I'm saying there's a possibility.
Now, there are plenty of other areas that take care of that factor.
That's, I mean, it's... But, I mean, I'll leave mine as yes, but I'm just, you know, if there's not clarification, if the council's, if you're not...
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt ordinance 1508.
Ordinance 1508, an ordinance amending various, I'm sorry, that's...
10.
10.
1509.
I apologize. 1509, an ordinance of the Township Council, of the Township Vernon County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, amending certain portions of Chapter 99 entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 250 entitled Fees and Escrows, and Chapter 269 entitled Fire Safety of the Township Code. The county assignment judge authorizes the maximum amount of penalties to be charged by the various municipal courts. Per Judge Wiesenbeck's authorization, the fees are being amended. This ordinance changes the township code to match the judge's order. May I have a motion to open the hearing on ordinance 1509?
Motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Murphy?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kadesh. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any person wishing to come forward and address this ordinance, please do so. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Murphy. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kadesh. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to adopt 1509? Place it on the floor for consideration.
Motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Murphy?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kadesh. Are there any comments, council? Okay, roll call, please?
Councilmember Kadesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Rizzuto?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt ordinance 1509.
Thank you. Ordinance 1510, an ordinance amending the Code of the Township of Vernon to discontinue the Advisory Board of Health. The health department function was transferred to the County of Sussex in 2008. The remaining functions, that is the register of vital statistics and permitting, have been transferred to other departments. This ordinance removes this section of the code and reserves the section for future use as it is no longer needed. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public on ordinance 15-10?
Motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Murphy? Seconded by Mr. Wetzel. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is open to the public. If you have any comments regarding...
This is just an introduction, isn't it?
This is a second reading.
Second reading, I'm sorry.
Any comments? If not, I'll ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Wetzel. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Murphy. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion, the council, to adopt 1510?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Wetzel?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Murphy. Any comments from the council?
I was against sending the health department off to the county in the first place. I'm really still against it. I was liaison to the health committee for many years, and I think it's a very necessary function to be local and be home rule, and I'm very sorry to see that there's absolutely no movement to bring it back.
I have to agree with Dan, because I had said that that would be one of the things I would look into, but the cap and the cost is just...
Totally prohibitive.
Yep, that's the problem, believe me. I would love to get it back, as many people would.
Actually, when you say the cost, I, I mean, I did not hear that. I heard that it was pretty much a wash. It was not that it was costing us less. Is that what you mean?
Even if it was a wash...
No, I'm speaking to Mr. Wetzel, but I'm just asking, was that, it was pretty much a wash? I'm not sure if, were you, were you given information?
But I understood when I, when I did some questioning with the mayor and so forth, that the cost was simply too high.
Right, well, it would, actually, I guess maybe it would, it, well, it might be interesting to know exactly what those costs are. I mean, just to have. It's, I'm, I have to say, it is a convenience for the public to have a health department here, although I, I do know some of the process has been actually favorable with the county, some of the process that's been happening with permits, I'd have to say. But, but like I said, I do realize that the convenience of having it here is better, but it would be interesting. I'm not sure exactly how we get those costs, or who would provide them to us.
Now, this government...
If you find out, let me know, and I will, I will do the checking.
This government found itself with this situation. We found it, and we were being held to a 2% cap. If, in fact, the amount of money that would require us to bring this back was in the area of 2%, the township still needs to be financed in other areas, including health benefits, including cost of insurances, salary increases. It becomes an extraordinary expense that I just don't see how this, how this township could afford. Mr. Zuckerman, perhaps you might be able to enlighten us on that.
We're still paying for it on the county.
Yep, but it's, but in order to bring it back here, you don't get that money back.
If we are directed by the council, we will do a review and see if we can provide some information to you on the cost.
I just think it's a waste, would be a waste.
Well, I would be interested in that.
I would agree.
Your call.
Yes, three of us.
Obviously, you have a majority of the people here want to have that information. I think it'd be a waste of time, but go ahead.
Thank you.
Uh, council comments?
Yes, John.
I'm sorry, may I roll call, please?
Councilmember Kadesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Rizzuto?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt ordinance 1510.
That concludes our agenda. May we have council comments? Mrs. Murphy?
Does any, did we get the street sweeper yet?
No, we have not. We were told that it'll be approximately four to six weeks.
More from today?
More from the manufacturer. We inquired about it today.
Okay, and when, actually, as far as the bills list that we receive, I'm not sure whether we would still be receiving it upon Mr. Kadesh's remarks or not, but I'll just go on the record to say I'd still like to receive the bills list if, for some reason, it stopped. Then I'll just make a request, and I, I'll make the request now.
You would get the bills list...
Yes, I'll still get it. So, I'm just making that clarification, that I just still want copies of the bills list.
Just, just so we're crystal clear, in 30-4F, the procedure stays the same. The ordinance requires you to get the bill list at the next, the next council meeting.
Yeah, that's fine, as long as I'm, so I just wanted to clarify with that. And then, is, does anyone know, will Vernon Township be participating in Sussex County Day on May 3rd? Because, does any, and the reason I ask is because I ran into Jackie Espinosa from JCPN L. She was at the pre-holder meeting last week, and she's on the county chamber, and she said she's been waiting to hear from several towns, including Vernon, as I believe their tables are free. It does not have to be, I mean, it could be the Environmental Commission. It could be the Economic Development Committee, but just to have representation at Sussex County Day, actually, I mean, it's, so it's not locked into, it doesn't have to be recreation, bless you, doesn't have to be anyone in, you know, specific, but maybe some of these groups would like to see, I mean, we do always say that we're the largest municipality in Sussex County, so it would be nice if there was probably, I would say, some visibility. I mean, if the town had a, had a table there, you know, I could probably go, too. I mean, it's just to have some presence. And then, I just wanted to mention on Saturday, I attended the youth leadership event at the PAL, which was very nice. I, there was a lot of food tasting, but I did stay away from it, and I was tempted, but I stayed away from it. And also, I did attend Earth Fest yesterday at Heaven Hill Farm, and, you know, it was nice to see a lot of familiar faces. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Mr. Kadesh?
No comments at this time.
Mr. Wetzel?
Yep, I will be at Sussex County Day, but I don't know what Vernon is doing, but Sussex Rural Co-op will have a booth there, as we did at Earth Fest Day, and I'd like to compliment the Chamber of Commerce and Mrs. Margaret Herr for an outstanding job. It was very, very well-planned and very, very well-attended, and fortunately, the weather held up, so, a good job.
Thank you. I don't know if all of, many of you recall or revise that we received from the New Jersey Department of Transportation a sum of $227,057 for, as a grant towards the Lake Walkhill Road Project. Interesting to note that the mayor called Senator Oroho in late March and asked him if he could check and see if we were being on the list, if we were on the list to receive funds. He did, and he called back and said that we weren't. Well, a subsequent call to the senator in early April, and his action on our behalf in contacting the Commissioner and New Jersey Department of Transportation resulted in receiving a grant in the amount of $227,057 for this particular project. It'll enable us to do up to, I believe, the Owen Station Road section. You know, it's worth noting that you have a very strong, a very capable, a very aggressive state senator who is willing to speak on behalf of Vernon Township, to the extent that even State Senator Stephen Sweeney has commented publicly on how effective Senator Oroho is as a, an advocate for his constituents. And I think this is just a prime example of how, how effective Senator Oroho is in acting on our behalf, because it wasn't any more than a week after the initial comment, or if the initial notification was received, then we received word from the senator and from the commissioner that we would be receiving these funds. Further, thanks to our Assembly people, Assemblywoman Allison McHos and Assemblyman Parker Space for their effort in working with Senator Oroho in pushing this particular piece of funding through. It's a lot of money, and it helps us work towards our end, and it becomes part of the total project in completing the Lake Walkhill Road Project. And in conversations that I had with the mayor earlier today, he told me that he had been at the mayor's conference and was able to thank Commissioner Jamie Fox personally. The man was able to understand the need in Vernon Township. This was a particular road that hadn't really been worked on in over 25 years, and that recent corrings showed that it was in a very, very deplorable shape, and hence, now we'll be able to go forward on the paving. Again, my, behalf of the council, I did send a letter to the senator. I would ask that my letter be made part of the minutes of this meeting, and copies of it can be given to the, if they haven't been already, to the members of the council, and the public, I think, should be... the public, I think, should be aware of how strong an advocate they have. That is really all I have. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I have a comment.
Sure.
I actually have to say, there's something Mr. Rizzuto and I agree upon, is the fact that Senator Ouroho is an asset to Sussex County, so I just thought I'd mention that. But just to add to the Lake Walkhill Road, the mayor did say that we were hoping to get federal funding.
That's correct.
But that could, but.
No, no, it's still in obeyance.
Correct, but except for the additional $200,000 for that portion of the project, the federal government would like us to actually bring the road up to its standards, which would be double the money.
Right.
So there could still potentially be an issue there, because I'm, I mean, would we be still going ahead with the road with $300,000? Or, I mean, does anyone know, or would we be coming up with the additional, too, if the money does not come through from the federal government?
Well, I think, you know, I would be speaking out of turn, perhaps, but I think if you begin to look at what is required by the federal government and then what could be presumed by the county, because once our roads are brought up to federal standards, they automatically comply with county standards, so, take it from there.
Well, the question is, will we have to tear up the entire road and set down a new base? That's the big question.
I'm not an engineer, I don't know if milling in place would be required, or if it would be a more substantial type of project.
And how far will that get us?
To Owen Station, Lake Walkhill.
This is going to get us to Owen Station.
Well, but that's the big question. If you have to lay down a whole new base, that may be much more expensive than what we plan on.
I believe this has already been worked in with the, within numbers. Yeah, he's not here. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Murphy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kadeesh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Lauren, why don't you?